Let's call the November 20th Zoning Commission regular meeting to order.
You got missing, you got Donna and.
We got two of those names.
And, so two.
Yeah. So we've got David. All right, I think David and Tucker this time. This one is. Yeah, okay. You got that? Okay. So let's proceed to the.
If you guys could speak into those microphones.
Okay. Proceed to the minutes of October 16. Anybody have any comments or corrections?
We had a couple. Line 52, that should be this, not Mr. LeCoeur. Line 125, the O should be capitalized, C O S.
Oh, the C O.
Yeah.
Good eye. Good eye, Tony. Man. Anybody got any other corrections?
No.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
So moved.
Second?
Who said?
David.
David, okay.
Second.
Second by Tony, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Abstain. Okay. Minutes are approved. Next order of business is a public hearing on application 2336. Tony, can you read that? Is this the continuation?
No, this is a brand new.
It's a brand new one.
Okay, application. Want me to read this to us?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Application ZC number 23 dash 36 of the Simsbury Zoning Commission applicant for a text amendment to the Simsbury zoning regulations pursuant to sections 4.5, 5.5, and 17.4. And the establishment of a new section 8.7 to allow mobile food vendors as an accessory use in business, industrial, professional office, and plant area development districts.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is as directed by the commission. This draft would allow mobile food vendors in all commercial zoning districts at any commercial business. So this draft does not single out or limit to a food and beverage user. I make one note, the report from the Plaid Commission, the Plaid Commission provided a referral at their meeting on November 14th, and they provided a negative recommendation based upon the draft. Their recommendation is they favored their previous recommendations, which was to support the mobile vendor ordinance where it was limited to food and beverage only. So that is important in that it requires any approval would require two thirds vote of the entire commission. So you need four votes to approve any text amendment related to this.
Thank you.
In addition, I've got one additional email from Sarah Nielsen this morning that I sent out to everybody. It's also in front of you on your on the dials. And I would note that for the record and put that in the public hearing record.
Got some from Tom Ryan.
Yeah, email from Sarah and with an attachment from Tom Ryan exactly.
Okay. No relation. Okay, commissioners, any comments for commissioners before we hear from the public?
Well, I would just call attention to the further note that we got from Sarah. Pointing out that a significant number of the restaurateurs from the town are not available tonight. There's a recommendation that we consider postponing or leaving open this public hearing to a time when the interested parties might be more available than they are right now.
Okay.
And my thought was just if we were inclined to just shove this thing forward, we might do that before we spend a lot of time on it then. That's just my thought.
Yeah, I'll just add, I was going to say the same thing, but I would support. I would support leaving it open so that we give the opportunity for more people. There's obviously a lot of passion from some of the local business owners. I think we should give them the opportunity to speak towards that.
Okay, David?
I agree. Seems like leaving it open is the best way forward, in my opinion.
Do I have a motion to?
I would, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I would recommend in this public hearing, I would suggest you hear from the folks that are here tonight, and then you can make a decision on where to go after you get here from the folks who are here tonight.
Sure.
I mean, there are folks who want to speak, so. That would be my recommendation.
Okay. Everybody happy with that?
Fine.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Anybody care to speak to this, this motion?
I'll go first.
Hi, my name's Steve Antonio. I live at 133 Holcomb Street. I've spoken on this particular topic before, and I know we have some new people affiliated with zoning right now. And welcome to them. I find it extremely frustrating, the lack of transparency in what occurred. I did not speak out at the meeting because it was not my privilege to do so. But what occurred at the last meeting without even voting on it was ludicrous. To have the constitutionality of whether you can go to a food truck. In the Constitution, it does not mention food trucks. If that is unconstitutional, all our zoning laws are unconstitutional. If you have a constitutional right to whatever business in whatever district, that nullifies the need for a zoning commission. That particular proposal, the initial one, not the one on the table now, was purposed to just favor restaurants. It did give some protection to the over 50 restaurants we have in town, but it did not steer business solely to them. It was not an unfair business practice. That particular proposal went through public comment. It went through stakeholder comment. It was disputed amongst the zoning commission, and then it was merely tabled for no reason other than you guessed, no offense, but you guessed it would not have enough votes. That was the reason for tabling it. You put us all the way back to the starting position where now we have to have open comment. You can see the sea of restaurateurs, which of course I say in satire because it's Thanksgiving week. Literally, it's almost offensive at this point how this food truck thing is going on in town with the lack of transparency and on Thanksgiving week literally lends some insult to injury. The people that are here are not here to speak on this. So we're going to go all the way back to the beginning. Instead of refining, if you wanted to refine that document, that would have been fine. But to just throw away all zoning laws like you did, which was really the onus of what's going on here, is ludicrous. You're the zoning commission, it's your job to refine it, not to just throw it out for a free for all. The other proposal, like I said, it's been purposed to favor restaurants, but in that was single payer allowance. It could go anywhere. Food truck could go anywhere in town if it was for a special event. Agriculture was broken out. It could go to any of our farms or events. The Performing Arts Center was broken out. They could have whatever food trucks they want whenever they want. All this was in it. Here we are back at the beginning. Instead of working on things like affordable housing and things that really I feel personally should be a priority for a zoning commission, were redoing food trucks, which is just like not, in my opinion, the greatest priority of our zoning commission. It is something that needs to be attended to, but it should be done expeditiously. And you can always do a zoning amendment. None of this is the Constitution. It's ludicrous, some of the stuff that's been purported as far as this food truck and to still have it. Lastly, in closing, I would very much respectfully request that in full transparency, the stakeholders are allowed to participate again. The general public that is not able to make this meeting, which was barely publicized and very inconvenient for people in the industry, would, it's only fair to let them participate. They pay the taxes in our town, they deserve to be heard. I kindly request that we continue this to another meeting where more people in that industry can speak out with their own input, basically. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Someone else care to speak to this?
Good evening, Sarah Nielsen, Simsbury Main Street Partnership. I want to thank the commission. We were, it feels like we're here months ago in this room, working together with stakeholders, with restaurateurs present to come up with what we felt was a fair compromise. I'd just like to reiterate, I've sent a bunch of comments, not only from our restaurateurs, but also from our major property owners, because this affects not just the restaurants. It affects our major property owners who pay hundreds of thousands of dollars in taxes. I'd like to remind the commission that right now we have, you know, Main Street, we just won an award for helping our businesses through COVID. We won a statewide award for doing that, and we worked our butts off. We worked with the governor's office on outdoor dining. We did everything possible to keep those restaurants open, but it was a struggle. And they're just starting to come out of COVID. Even though we've been out of COVID arguably for about a year and a half, they're just starting to recoup some of those losses. They're just starting to see profits again. And I would say to you that allowing food trucks anywhere is going to close their doors. You are going to see vacancies. We are going to hurt our taxpayers. We already have several restaurants that are across the street at Fiddler's Green, which are having trouble. We've had one fold and we've had another who's been laid empty. And if you allow food trucks at any commercial district, out of town food trucks, then you're going to continue to see that trend, and it will also become harder and harder for those property owners to rent those spaces. I'd like to point out that it was asked by some of the commission members whether or not this was either illegal or unconstitutional, and it went back and forth. And a reminder that an accessory use is very legal and has been used by this zoning commission many times legally. This is an accessory use. It doesn't provide a benefit just to food establishments. I would argue that food establishments are already, they pay taxes. They pay taxes on their supplies, they pay taxes on their equipment. They employ our residents, they employ people, they have to get permits. They go to the Farmington Valley Health District, they have to get grease traps and things from, you know, all of our state agencies. They have to get checked out by the fire district. They have building permits. They, the cost that's incurred upon our brick and mortar businesses, our bricks and mortar restaurants, is so high that to say a bricks and mortar restaurant can also have an ancillary accessory use food truck, it's not making them, it's not saying that we're favoring them. It's just saying that we recognize the use and the money and the capital and all of the things you put back into the community, and we'd like to, if you have the opportunity, that you could do that. What you're doing and the way that this is written, this new one, actually it gives preference to non-Simsbury businesses. You're saying Chick-fil-A out of Enfield, which is, let's be honest, is one of the big reasons that Chick-fil-A out of Enfield can't come into Simsbury to Tractor Supply and sell their sandwiches. They're going into a non-food based business who never came in with a business plan, who never said before zoning, well, I need to have a food truck in order to have profits, in order to keep my doors open. And what you're doing instead is you're hurting Kevin Farley and Harvest Cafe and the numerous restaurants in the North Village that are just coming out of COVID that are seeing their customers who have an expendable amount of, you know, limited disposable income, go to Chick-fil-A. And then Chick-fil-A turns and drives off to Enfield with the profits, laughing the whole time. This is the type, this is what we're doing by opening this up. We had what I thought was such a good, such a productive meeting with this commission. Mr. Chairman, you gave direction. You said after the meeting that you heard and that this is the direction we're moving forward. And then all of a sudden it just stopped. And I think that my emails and all of the things that we've been sending to you that they, excuse me, couldn't be here today, show that our restaurateurs and our property owners say that this is going to hurt their businesses. We should be Simsbury first. Simsbury taxpayers, Simsbury businesses, Simsbury residents, Simsbury quality of life, that should come first in everything that we do. And I don't believe that this draft does that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So my name is Sharon Thomas. I live at 42 Bretonwood Drive in Simsbury, Connecticut. I am not a business owner, I'm a resident of the town. Longstanding resident, a resident that visits many of the businesses or restaurants within the town. My purpose of standing here today is, we talk about wanting this to be an inclusive and a town of belonging, yet the way that I'm taking this is that we're excluding other businesses from coming in. And it's not that I personally feel that it's taken away, I think that it adds. There's some things that we will never have in this town. But yet, because we don't have them, doesn't mean that we shouldn't provide access to those in town who would enjoy them. Give a case in point, Chick-fil-A was brought up, yes, Chick-fil-A lives, is up in Enfield. And my interest in this came because of what happened with Chick-fil-A. I think that any business in town who doesn't have a restaurant should have the ability to invite someone else. Tractor Supply has workers. They may not be able to afford to go to some of the surrounding places for lunch. And to have a Chick-fil-A come and sit on their property, I don't think it's taken away from anything. We used to have Maine Lobster come in to the area. I noticed that they're not coming in anymore. And so what we're doing is saying, we're only going to provide light businesses to have restaurants in the town. I love milk, I love all of our restaurants, and I frequent them often. And people will see me post, but it doesn't mean that I don't have a taste for other things. And what better way to introduce our Simsbury residents to other foods and other cultures by having a food truck come in for a limited amount of time? They're not going to be here for a month, two months, three months, a year. They're just going to be here for a limited amount of time. And it also gives them an idea of whether or not they may want to come in and establish a business full time. So I do think that we should consider it. We have these carve outs for Simsbury Meadows and some of the other places. I don't think that we should be exclusionary, and I think we should be careful about how this may be read as being exclusionary.
Thank you.
Hello, kids. Kevin Farley, Farley Max, up in North Hot Meadow. Saying too, what's going on, I started in this business March 2020, March 6th, signed my lease, March 16th, I closed the world down. Been through a lot of stuff. I had no money. I couldn't get touched by a bank, no PPP money, nothing. It was all personal money. I lost over half million dollars due to COVID. And then for, say, Chick-fil-A being in there. Tractor Supply came in, Weather Building, all the big weeks came in, Vice President, this and all that. I said, I want to work with you, no problem at all. I got shunned away. Here's Chick-fil-A. In regards to these young ladies, if I'm making, if I'm working, making, say, a thousand dollars a day, someone comes in and takes away from my money, my livelihood, like Sarah said, and going back to Enfield or wherever else, it's not fair to me that I get paid property taxes on everything. They pay nothing at all. Going through this, like I said, I've been 40 years in this business. I had no problem with food trucks, but as you said back in the last meeting, certain areas. Yes, we want to support local businesses, like she said, and try some different stuff. But Simsbury, as far as I know, doesn't, didn't want to have those chain kind of places in here. They wanted a small, like small business, a mom and pop kind of place. We do have that. Steve's been here forever, family in. I've been here brand new. Tyler from Millwrights and Peter from President Company. The thing is that if I'm working so hard and I see across the street like 15 people out of a food truck, for what reason, why would Chick-fil-A have a place there? Why would other places have it? We have 50, what, 54 places north of Abigail's here to eat eateries per se. We don't need any more. What we need really is, I guess, I think Chipotle and Starbucks is going where Wagner Ford is. I'm right across the street from Tractor Supply. Five people without other condos there because of Tractor Supply. We need a venue for families and kids to bring in, like the High Skating Rink, to support like the bowling, the Amish shop, the miniature golf. You need an activity, bring stuff in. The hockey ring brings business in for me. Because I get people from Chicago, Minnesota, California, Texas, all over the place coming in tonight, and they love my place because of simple food. Food trucks are food trucks. But again, they're taking money out of our pockets because we are brick and mortar. I know that some places have food trucks, like Millwrights, President Company, they do outside stuff due to COVID, because they, that's how they made their money. I didn't have, didn't have the luxury to have a food truck. The thing is, imagine you're working, you're working for a job and they say, work for less money. Would you work for less money and then all of a sudden you make money? I lost a half million dollars. I'm trying to gain it. Right now, I'm starting to make a dollar more a day now. I'm starting to make a profit. But when I see Chick-fil-A over there, shut his clothes on Wednesdays, ran out my parking lot to all the food trucks, make money that way. I know, like she said, she's like, you know, you want to try different things. But you can drive to Chick-fil-A, you can drive to Arby's, you can drive anywhere you want, you have cars. It's just, I don't, and business around here, we've been busting our chops for a long time. It's Steve or 15, you know, family business, to go through what we went through. But for food trucks to come in and take money in my pocket, my family's pocket, my food pocket, and I got to pay my staff, and like, we're sitting there and they leave with a thousand dollars in their pocket, and out of a thousand dollars, what do they pay for taxes? Absolutely nothing. I make a thousand dollars, I make a hundred dollars out of it. Right, eight hundred dollars goes to the town, to the state, to this, to this and that, whatever. So the thing is, we had a nice little proposal of, yeah, if it's the Simsbury Farms or whatever, that's great, but to be here, you don't need any more eateries. You need different places to bring people to this town so that the eateries here can be more busy. I'm in the northern, farthest part of town. I struggle to get business in there. And when I see a food truck just popping in there for no reason at all, and they don't pay, they pay, what, maybe a hundred dollars for their food permit, whatever? It's not fair to me or anybody else. But I understand that, like she says, it's a nice variety to have, but during an event is fine. It's just, I wish more people were here, but it's hard for the restaurateurs to be here to say Thanksgiving Eve. It's taking money out of our pockets. To other people, it might not seem that way, we want to try it. But we're struggling, I'm struggling every day. Last two years, they should have been closed. This year, I almost closed because I didn't know what was going on. But when I see Chick-fil-A, customers, and customers telling me, they shouldn't be there. Like I said, just imagine yourself making money, someone comes in, takes money in your pocket, and they pay no taxes, you're losing money every single day. That's what affects our business. But if they're coming in on an event at your house for one day, or Simsbury Farms, that's not a big deal, that's one time. But to be over a period of time, that's money out of our pockets. So I said, I wish, I hope that we can revisit this at a different time to have certain things, but realize you guys are in the restaurant business, you don't know. Like, I don't like, Chipotle and Starbucks should not be Wagner Ford, it should be a bowling alley or some kind of event. The more food you have, like look at West Hartford, they don't allow any more food in that place because their places are closing down, no more restaurants. How many restaurants do you need in West Hartford Center? You don't need that many, you need businesses to support the restaurants and vice versa. Little things like that. Again, I don't know much, I'm a restaurant guy, I've been there 40 years in this business. I have no idea what I'm doing, but I'm surviving my, I'm surviving the best I can. Good food, good service, good atmosphere, that's all I'm trying to do, but I don't want a food truck. So again, I'm against the food trucks permanently at different places. But if they're in here for events or housing, I'm fine with. I just hope that the next restaurant guys come in, to try to tell you the same kind of story, is that we're, we're not opposed to food trucks. Limited is fine, but you don't need any more food stuff around. We're trying to survive ourselves with what we got. We all have great food, we really do. We have Thai, we have, you know, Italian, comfort food, we have Asian, we have every kind of food. Chick-fil-A is a billion dollar company, they don't need to be in here. Have them build, have them build a building, brick and mortar. If they want to be here, have them pay taxes, brick and mortar, all that fun stuff. So again, I just said, I just, I mean, I probably didn't make sense today at all, but I appreciate you listening to me. It means a lot, like I said, I just, like I said, I care about my, four years in the business, I care about my business. I just want to take money in my pocket. I said, I lost a half million dollars in sales. That's a lot of money that I could get back to the town and promote some more stuff. So if I lost that in COVID, imagine what I'm losing with a food truck crossing the street from me. A thousand dollars, every time, it's a thousand bucks, every time. So it's a thousand times 52, that's 52 grand I could have made that I lost. But at the $52,000, what did the town get? Absolutely nothing out of that. They got nothing back from the food trucks. So I appreciate you listening to me, you guys are awesome, we'll see you soon.
Thank you very much. Anyone else care to speak to this application? Okay, I think we're back to where we were. I believe we all nodded yes. That it would be good to.
I'm just giving you the word, you were struggling, Mr. Chairman. Lord.
Public hearing is still open.
Yep.
So you can speak.
All right, let's continue this, December 18th.
Okay. We have a motion to continue.
Yeah, what I'm going to do is I'm going to move to continue the matter to January 17th. Because we're going to have a pretty significant hearing on the 18th that's going to be fairly lengthy. I think the January 3rd, right after the holidays, not a great time to actually try to consider all the permutations. So my motion would be to continue this to January 17th, 2024.
I'm not sure we have a meeting then.
We do.
We do?
You're going to approve your calendar at the end of this meeting?
Right.
Yeah, so January, maybe on the two Wednesdays, like you normally.
Okay.
So that would be.
Fine.
Yeah.
Good.
I would agree.
I agree with that.
Number second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Is that an appropriate thing from a staff standpoint? Is that inappropriate?
To continue to.
To that time. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stay. Carry six, nothing, we'll continue this public hearing until the meeting in January 17th, 2024. Okay.
Twenty-four.
All right, the next order of business is the public hearing on application 2339. Could you read that, please?
Application ZC number 23 dash 39 of the Simsbury Zoning Commission applicant for a text amendment to the Simsbury zoning regulations pursuant to section 17.4 to update the definition of family in order to comply with state legislation related to family group, childcare, and family and childcare homes.
Okay. I think this is a.
This is really an administrative item. It's a, it's a directive pursuant to PA, state legislation, PA 23142, that essentially says, or effectively says, you must treat these family care and family group homes as they meet the definition under the state as single, the same way you would treat single family or residential homes. So we talked to our, the town attorney, the recommendation was, treat it just like we treated a previous approach, which was for accessibility. We added that use to the definition of family. So we would recommend adding these two definitions to the definition of family.
Did we get a referral?
You got a referral, you got a positive referral from the Plaid Commission on October, November 14th.
Can you give a little bit more context?
Yeah, I was curious what the impetus was for this, to be honest. Because it just seems to be just daycares, like, which is kind of unclear, but yeah.
So it is daycare, you're exactly right there. Not, this is not kind of group homes as you might think of.
Oh, that's what I know what this is.
Foster care or juvenile, these are, these are the two definitions of daycare under the, under state legislation. So family group home is one to six. And family group childcare home is over six to 12. They are, they must be licensed by the state. So these are your essentially, you know, home occupation childcare uses.
Yeah.
And so the legislature has given them those protections that they can't be, they can't be overburdened by a special permit or by an individual use where you don't allow them in the district. So it's. or by an individual use where you don't allow them in the district. So, it's embedded in the state legislation.
Plus, don't we have to also certify to the state by a date certain?
Yes.
That we are in compliance with the public act?
So, we have to certify or attest on an annual basis that the town of Simsbury is consistent and complies with state legislation, and you have to do that on repetition every year. So, this is actually effective December one, the state legislation, we have to attest, or explain how we're going to achieve that by December first. So that's why we kind of got it to you fairly quickly.
Right.
Did this come out of a legal decision or something?
No, it's open to the legal law.
I don't know that we have the entire, I don't know that we have a legislative background to this. I just think there is support. Tucker?
Yeah, it was a law passed in the most recent legislature.
Yeah, right. I don't know what came to this game.
It, because, yeah, like you said, people were overburdened by, they were unable to run like these family daycares in towns. Towns were causing, like, towns are causing them to have all sorts of special permits and all sorts of stuff to run what essentially should just be an as-of-right use in a single-family home. And what it seems like you guys are doing is the way we're going to try to achieve the state vision on this is by updating the term "family" to include the...
To include the two definitions.
The two definitions.
They would be essentially, the definition of family in the town of Simsbury is this, this, this.
Right.
So, our approach from talking to the town attorney was that way, anytime there's a residential use, if a single-family use is permitted there, so is the...
Sure.
So is this use. As opposed to going into the use list and putting...
I see what you're saying, yeah. It simplifies the process.
In every zone and district.
Yeah, so it essentially makes these types of things as-of-right in single-family where they would be single-family.
That is what...
Yeah, that makes sense. I'm familiar with the legislation.
George, I have a quick question, though. I know that they're, you know, in, I understand that it's daycares and I understand, but the wording is such that there might be some who think this is actually referring to group homes. And my only question is, is this change in definition in any way opening the door to that where now group homes can be allowed as-of-right in neighborhoods? That's my only concern. Although, I know that's not the intention. I just want to make sure that that's...
So, let's just go ahead and make sure. No, because I think we say family childcare home or group childcare home.
Okay.
But why do you have the word "group"?
Well, that's in the state definition.
That's the state definition. That's the state language. That's what they call the use. So, we've used their language. So, we, I mean, we would, as zoning staff, we would draw gestation.
Okay.
We would...
All in the same use?
Not the same use.
Okay. That's the only, I figured I want to at least get that on record so that there's no concerns.
And again, certain group homes have certain protections on their own as well.
See, boys and girls.
Right, but this wouldn't impact that. Gotcha.
Okay. Any more? More questions?
Tucker, help.
Thank you, Tucker.
I literally just repeated what he said. I just happen to know who worked on the legislation, yeah.
I can say it almost exactly what I said.
Thank you, George.
So, it is a public hearing, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Would somebody in the public like to speak to this application? Anybody in the public like to speak to this application? Okay. I think it's time to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
And second by David?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Carry six, nothing. We close the public hearing. We have a motion that has been prepared for us.
I'll be happy to move that the zoning commission approve ZC twenty-three thirty-nine as a text amendment to the Simsbury zoning regulations pursuant to section seventeen point four to update the definition of, quote, "family," end quote, in order to comply with the state legislation related to family group childcare and family childcare homes subject to the staff memo dated October sixteen, two thousand twenty-three.
Second? Second by Tony. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained.
I abstain. I helped work on the legislation.
Okay, five to nothing with one abstention. It passes. Thank you. Okay, next order of business. Application twenty-three forty.
Application twenty-three forty of SL Simsbury.
Mr. Chairman, you don't need to read. This is not a public hearing.
This is not a public hearing.
So, I don't need to read the call.
Bless you.
All right. Mr. Donovan?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I represent SL Simsbury, the owner of the Ridge at Talcum Mountain, and we're here with that long last for a minor site plan amendment to the existing north commercial building, which you're very familiar with. First of all, I'd like to thank the commission, in particular commissioners, for the patience that you've shown with this project. The, as you know, the forty-acre development at the north part of the Talcum Ridge is primarily apartments, and the commission was generous in allowing the issue, permits to issue and permits of occupancy to issue, and now it's a very healthy and very strong community. And tonight, we are asking for modifications, as shown in the application, to allow a play care area because the proposed use is going to be a childcare facility. And Holden Sabato, the director of development for them, is here today for you. And then you have a staff report dated November twenty from George McGregor. And staff has been very helpful. There's been a lot of back and forth on this application, but staff's been very helpful. I think it's a very good application, and Holden Sabato will be here to answer any questions that you have about it or it. But I do think that we're all at long last, we're in pretty good shape with that.
Thank you, TJ. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Holden Sabato, Development Director with Silverman Group. We're very happy and excited to be here. As TJ mentioned, we have a potential user for, to fill the currently under construction commercial building going on at our Ridge at Talcum Mountain North Site. As you may remember, last April, I believe it was, April twenty twenty-two, we were approved for the second commercial building. There was some, I guess, nervousness about being able to fill it. It's under construction now. We have been in very good discussions with Goddard for a couple of months now. And we're kind of at the point where, after this, they should be ready to execute at least. So, again, any questions that you might have about the operations, the use, we're happy to answer. And again, very, very excited about this opportunity we have. I think it's a perfect use for the building. So, any questions you have, here to answer.
Okay.
Did you say you have a tenant lined up for this?
Correct, the Goddard School.
George, can you give us a little background?
Yeah, let me just, let me just take it two steps back. I'm behind you. I apologize. I'm just taking pictures. So again, it's, so Mr. Sabato's talking about the commercial building on the left side. It is a, you have approved it for sixteen thousand square feet of multi-tenant use. Eight and eight, you did that April of twenty twenty-two. We're talking about that front portion. What the applicant is asking for, it's a revision to the site plan that would add an outdoor play area for a childcare use, a pre-K childcare facility. Name, it's been disclosed, it's the Goddard School. I think they are in Avon today. And so, they would occupy ten thousand or so square feet, maybe a little more. And so, the reasons, it's in front of you, it's, I mean, it might appear to be a small change, but it's a change to the parking area, and I think that's something that the zoning commission ought to see. It's also a change to the outdoors, there's outdoor play area that's being added along the front. I want to make one particular clarification. So, the initial submission showed, or I think in the staff report showed, that play area extending into the landscape buffer yard, the applicant has revised that, and that is in front of you tonight as a handout. And so, that revision brings it back to the hundred-foot set buffer yard. And it extends the parking, excuse me, extends the playground back into the parking area a little bit. So, no longer can you do a three sixty, it would just be a park and turn back out. So I think that's, those are really the two minor changes. And again, that might be helpful to the screen behind you. That shows the original approval in the original parking lot with the applicant's changes.
So, what does "original" mean?
Oh, so the site plan that the zoning commission approved in April twenty twenty-two. The site plan for this building.
That's not the master site plan, that's...
It is not. It is not the original master site plan, no. You approved a type-two revision in April twenty-two that showed the footprint of the commercial in the parking area that goes with it. So, this is a change to that site plan. The applicant also included outdoor play area concepts and fencing. But I had one more thing, your design review commission just reviewed the application an hour or so ago, recommended approval with two conditions, and those conditions being the applicant include an additional birmingham along the frontage. So, if you can see kind of where this sits, this space falls in between kind of two areas, there's a depression. So, they recommended some additional undulation and some burning and landscaping in this location that the applicant should work with staff, and also they recommended the earth tone, an earth tone color for the play areas, and that those play areas be padded and not shredded material, that they be a solid material. Have to make some extra questions.
Is that to be a solid material and not a...
As opposed to a shredded rubber material. There's a solid surface that's soft and padded, that is in the industry.
Okay.
And there's also kind of a shredded surface. And so, they asked the applicant to provide a non-shredded material.
What was the idea behind the berm?
So, what I think, if you kind of try to get a little bit of perspective on this, so that play area is gonna be a little visible from Hot Meadow.
Yeah.
And this may, the addition of the landscaping, the addition of the berm is gonna help screen that a little bit more.
So, you say, I think, like, ten thousand square feet will be the school, and so there's another six thousand square feet that's still available. Is that correct? Or do you have any plan for that?
They'll be taking the entire bottom level as well as probably about a quarter of the top level, but they do want the opportunity to expand to the rest of the top level in the future.
Okay.
What color? Just a moment on the parking.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, could you tell us what the parking was before this drawing?
I believe so. This results in a reduction of five parking spaces.
And do you know what the parking was before the site plan amendment of June last year? Well, let me make this easier. What is the standard for parking for this use in commercial buildings?
I do know we comply with, you know, master site development plan and the form-based code. You know, to be honest, in terms of parking right here with a specific use, I don't have it.
George, can you help us with what is the standard in Simsbury?
So, this particular master plan had its own parking standards for everything. So, this, the parking was done on a complete master plan-wide basis. So, there's on-street parking, there's parking in this area. So, I think the numbers that are used in the master plan is a generalized commercial number. But it's a, but the parking is not just figured in this area for this use, it is across the board for the entire plan. Perhaps it's specific numbers.
Good to know. No, I recall that in that June site plan amendment, the building was almost doubled in size, and yet the parking was less than it was before.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. But your point is that the entire place, literally hundreds, if not a thousand parking places, maybe more, is what's being counted, not this eighteen changing to twelve or whatever it is here.
That's correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Do you have any sense of how many children will be attending on a daily basis?
So, from preliminary discussions with Goddard, it's around a hundred twenty, a hundred forty students roughly, based on the, I guess, the attendance they could get.
Current enrollment.
Any questions?
Well, I guess I'm just curious, are they bringing, are they moving from Avon to Simsbury, or are they opening a second location? So like, do they know physically how many kids are gonna be moving over, or?
So, they, I mean, corporate, they have kind of a standardized program. So, they know pretty well what they could accomplish, basically. And I believe this is an entirely new location.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Would the playscape be open to the public when not in operation?
No, it would be just private for Goddard.
Other questions?
I just ask questions. We're being good, isn't it? For just for the clarification for the public who don't know this, we've had a very difficult relationship over getting this building built. This TJ? There was a very optimistic sort of description of what has transpired in recent years to get this building built. It has not been a pleasant experience. We've been disappointed after disappointment after disappointment on when it's gonna be done. Now, we're just hoping we could find out exactly what year it's gonna be done, never mind every six-month increments that it's missed. But here we are. It is almost done.
Yes.
I know I went by there today and the crew working on the building was too. I think if we increase the commitment to the construction process, you'll get it done faster. That's my casual opinion. Thank you.
Okay, you ready to make a motion?
Oh, I have one more question.
Sure, go ahead.
Just Goddard. So, Goddard School, do you guys expect the majority of the students to come from the, from the local development? Or do you expect it to come from a lot of other places? Like, is it designed based on like the rents or whatever to like be affordable for the school like right there, or is it like...
There's really no actual connection there. I mean, I'm sure some of the expectation is that, yes, I'm sure some of the students will come from the ridge, but there's nothing tailored specifically to it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Oh, you do. Oh, no, go ahead. No, no, I don't want to fight you. Go ahead.
Move.
Oh, I'm sorry. This isn't a public hearing.
It is not a public hearing.
Is there no public hearing in this?
No.
This is not.
No, it is not. Site plan, a site plan amendment does not require a public hearing.
So, does that mean that the public is not allowed to speak?
Correct.
On this particular application.
Okay, move. The zoning commission approves application number twenty-three dash twenty-four, a type-two application pursuant to the Hartford-Simsbury Form-Based Code, paren HS-FBC, close paren, to amend the approved site plan to add an outdoor play area and revise parking lot configuration in support of a pre-K childcare facility at One Cooper Avenue, AKA the Ridge at Talcum Mountain, two fifty Hot Meadow Street, paren assessors map F seventeen block one five four, lot zero zero nine dash three dash two, close paren, zone HS-FBC, subject to the following findings and conditions. The application is consistent with the site plan requirement of the HS-FBC. Two, the application conforms to the Hartford-North Master Plan of Development. Three, the project shall be developed in substantial conformance to the submitted site plan amendment dated July thirteen, two thousand twenty-three, revised August twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. That's the date on the plan.
Titled the Goddard School Floor Plan Data Plan.
Yeah, it's twenty...
Twenty-three. I apologize. Yes, correct.
Let me go back. Revised August twenty-four, two thousand twenty-three, titled the Goddard School Floor Plan Data Plan. Four, the applicant shall incorporate the change into the final as-built for the Hartford North Site.
And then we want to incorporate the design review committee's recommendations.
Yes, I do. Five would be additional berm and landscaping in front of play area, working with staff. uh, to provide conformity. Six, non-shredded play base beige in color to be used in the play area. And I would also note that I believe it was said that it was application number twenty-three dash twenty-four. It should be number twenty-three dash forty.
It's tough, Tony.
Good.
Tough crowd. I will second that.
Second, my man. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It carries, six, nothing, thank you very much. Been a long time getting these commercials. Business going.
Thanks, Holden.
Thank you. George, we have...
So you got it touted?
Yep.
One question on two dates, George.
I'm sorry.
One question on two dates in February.
Uh, okay, can you, do you want to pull it up?
I do.
She's tough. Tough crowd.
Yeah, go ahead, you have that, George?
Um, how come there's not a second zoning meeting in February?
That's going to be, uh, Wednesday?
Right, so where you had... Where you had other holidays, you made it on a Wednesday, so how come there's not a Wednesday?
Okay, so I will tell you what our approach was. We tried to copy what we have done for the past several, three, four, five years. And we had, this, this body has historically moved the January meetings to Wednesday and did not have a second meeting in February. So if we could do that, we, we, we just haven't. So that's why we bring it to you for this discussion. You could, we could move it, we could have a second meeting that, but we, we historically haven't.
Feels like there's been a lot on the agendas, and especially if we're now moving food trucks and other things. No, I'm asking.
What does everyone else think?
It, it is rare that I suggest we have more meetings.
Right.
But I do think that because we are pushing some big issues, and I think the whole, um, Silverman after the open here, um, you know, the public hearing next month, I just, I just think it might not be a bad idea to have another February meeting.
So that Wednesday again would be bad, but twenty-one.
Twenty-one, which actually I won't be able to attend, but that's not a very...
Tucker?
Sorry.
You okay?
Yeah.
You okay with this?
Oh, adding the meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I think that the logic makes sense.
Pardon adding the meeting, okay, maybe?
I think you're just adding and then you can always remove it if you don't need it.
Okay.
And then my same question would be for September, the first, the first Wednesday in September.
Labor Day.
Yeah, that, that's up to the commission, of course.
We did that this year, actually.
That would be Wednesday.
Since we didn't do August.
So that's September...
We had a regular meeting in...
Four, okay. Nine, four.
Yep.
Okay, anything else? And a motion to accept the calendar as modified.
I would move to accept the calendar as modified, including February twenty-first and September fourth as hearing dates.
Second? Second, who second now? Tony. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? What? Aye, okay, that was four.
The world for it, yeah.
And abstained? Obstained, so it's six, nothing. The calendar is set for those new guys.
Gotcha. Is this your last meeting, Mr. Chairman?
It certainly is.
Mr. Chair, do you have one other, uh, planning director report item for you to receive? So the town attorney has received, um, legal correspondence from a, from a party we're involved with. And we would request that, that you schedule, and this is, this is hard because there's not a lot of room in the schedule. The town attorney would like to brief you on that correspondence as soon as he can and as soon as possible. But he is available only on Monday, November twenty-seventh at five P.M. And that would be a special meeting and executive session to receive a legal briefing from the town attorney on a legal matter. If, if the commission, if this commission is not available on that date, we cannot meet until after December fourth. And as such, we would then schedule a special meeting with the, um, the newly constituted commission. So we want to, we, the chairman and I and the town attorney certainly wanted to give you, the sitting body, the opportunity to get that legal briefing.
Is this a pressing matter that needs to be heard next Monday or is there any issue pushing it back to December?
I think that's up to the commission.
And you say Monday, November twenty-seventh?
Yeah, yeah, so, so the question is, is that there are obviously some, some commissioners that, that won't be commissioners after December fourth. And so, uh, this correspondence came in while you were sitting, while you, this body was sitting, it came in on Saturday, in fact. Um, and so we, I, town attorney and the chairman wanted to give you the opportunity, whether you wanted to have that briefing or not. If you don't want the briefing, we'll give it to the next group when they're constituted. We're going to give them a briefing anyway.
Right.
But...
I mean, I'll defer to those leaving the board.
Well, how about this?
Well, how, how many people can be here? How many of the commissioners can be here on Monday at five?
I can be.
Yeah, I would, I would not be able to attend that, unfortunately.
I cannot.
I can.
I can.
One, two, three. I mean, I could be, if I want to ask another question. If he briefs this commission next Monday, would he brief the new commission the following Monday? Is that what you're saying?
It wouldn't be the following Monday, but it would be soon thereafter.
I mean, I don't, my view is I don't see the point in having two briefings, particularly since...
We'd be paying for it.
One of the briefings would be for people that leave the commission. So I would, I would...
I think, yeah, in fairness though, this commission has spent very little on the town attorney, believe me, given past years. So I, I don't feel any sympathy over the cost. Pay the guy for an hour driving to the board and an hour for being here, how long can it take? My question is whether this briefing, the topic and what he has to say to us is, is that what we've been waiting for all this time? Or this piece of correspondence has nothing to do with it?
It is what we've been waiting for. Yes, this is the appropriate time.
Well, just look to, see how many of the people that are not continuing.
Right.
How many of them want to come?
I mean, I'm the only one here.
Just as a little, just as a little aside, I had not, I mean, this is kind of my call. I had not planned to schedule anything for December fourth for the, the meeting except to elect officers and have a briefing and do a little, you know, quick just overview. So I wasn't going to put anything on that agenda.
Yeah.
But it will be...
Good idea.
Okay, you guys will all be in either or both.
Yes.
You three.
Yeah.
Four, actually.
Yep.
And Tucker. So I'm the only one that's out. And I think that you guys should wait and have it in December when everybody's here. I don't think that this commission would be in a position to take any action whatsoever.
Regardless of what they...
So we should just let it ride. The town attorney is still negotiating, that's his, it's all him, him. So let him, let him brief us, but brief the new commission. Because if he were to ask us to do something and we'd have to have a special meeting, we'd have to know what the special meeting says. We don't know that now. So my opinion would be, let's, let's pass on it for next Monday.
I think that's fine, and we would just, I would work with the commission to, to schedule a special meeting very quickly after December fourth.
Okay, you guys will all be part of it anyway.
Yep.
Yeah.
My only concern is December is a lot busier than November for me. You know, I don't know about how other people feel.
I would recommend that we do it in the, that first week.
Fine, fine.
Okay.
I, I have no other business.
Okay.
Be, before, uh, there is an entertainment of a motion to adjourn, I would like to take a moment of personal privilege to thank Chairman David Ryan for his service to the zoning commission for many years and for leading us through interesting times.
Thank you.
I second that. Yep.
As a, uh, matter of fact, I have a few words I'd like to say.
Oh, no.
It's three minutes. For fourteen years I have been on the zoning commission and for the last seven, I've been honored to be your chairman. Now fourteen years is nothing compared to the forty-six years that Jim Gallagher put in before he retired in two thousand eleven. But over fourteen years, we have had many dedicated commissioners and the zoning commission has been very productive. We have processed an average of over fifty applications per year. And we took new initiatives to improve the Simsbury zoning regulations. In addition, we responded to the town charter revisions, to the P O C D and to Connecticut state statutes. We created new zoning regulations to expand housing opportunities. The Planned Area Development Zone, the Workforce Housing Zone, the Simsbury Center Zone, and the Hartford-Simsbury Form-Based Code. These regulations foster mixed-use multifamily housing with where appropriate deed-restricted affordable housing units. In total, about fifteen hundred new housing units have been approved. In response to new Connecticut statutes, we loosened our accessory dwelling unit regulations while at the same time preserving local control. We increased the permitted floor area for ADUs and additionally allow ten percent more floor area if the ADU conforms to ADA requirements. We decided a public hearing was unnecessary for ADU approval within a single-family residence. However, for detached ADUs, the commission retained the public hearing as part of the approval process. The zoning commission with planning staff rewrote the Simsbury zoning regulations to make them more user-friendly while adding regulations covering agritourism and home-based businesses. These added regulations were directly in line with the overall objective of zoning, that is to forestall problems by separating incompatible land uses. In recognition of the pandemic shift away from office space utilization, the zoning commission changed the zoning regulations to allow conversion of previously constructed office buildings to multifamily use. Another important change was to eliminate the special exception public hearings for temporary alcohol service. Nonprofit organizations prior to this change had to pay three hundred and sixty-five dollars in zoning fees for each fundraising event that served alcohol. Now, initial temporary alcohol-serving events require a site plan approval from zoning, but no public hearing. Repeat events only need a permit from the planning department. This provision also applies to farm-to-table dinners. Our residents enjoy these events and our farms need them to survive. It has been a rewarding time, especially in seeing the grand list recover from the Hartford Insurance departure. The recovery has been highlighted by the attraction to Simsbury of young, highly-educated residents to the new multifamily complexes. Thank you for your contributions and the opportunity you gave me to serve as chairman.
Thanks, Dave.
In recognition, you each get...
Thank you so much.
Is Dave Fox?
No.
Aw, very nice.
Oh, thank you, Dave. Thank you, Dave. A regular cone, a taller one.
It's about...
I know.
Yeah, that's right.
Thanks, Dave.
Sure.
Okay, guys.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, close. Thank you.